Next we'll move to our study session item. Which is discussion, no action. We'll turn the time over. I guess we'll start with Deputy Superintendent of Policy Angie Stallings to represent your team. We're gonna have a discussion on R two seven seven dash six one three bullying prevention and discussion and an overview on this rule.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon.
Oh, you're gonna be the driver, right? So I'm gonna fix my.
Actually, Amy Still Smith is going to be sharing screen and she'll be sharing the slides.
Okay.
So Amy, if you'd like, you can go ahead and start connecting and then I will provide the introduction before Chair if it's okay, we'll ultimately turn the time over to.
So.
And Tanya.
Manage expectations, we're gonna have a presentation and you'll let us know when we can ask questions.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Great, thank you Board members. It's good to see you again Angie Stallings Deputy Superintendent of Policy. And today we're going to be discussing bullying prevention, give an update on the bullying prevention efforts that we have going on at USBE, including an overview, the rule R two seven seven six one three as well. We also have provisions in Utah code that apply to bullying prevention. And as part of the the overview today, we'll include the reporting requirements as well as some of the supports and technical assistance that our staff provide. So who am specialists and subject matter experts in this area are Tanya Alverno, who's a prevention specialist here at USBE and Amy Still Smith, who's also a prevention specialist. And actually, I think Tanya is a coordinator, but I apologize if I got your title wrong, Tanya, and you feel free to introduce yourselves with your specific titles when you present. But Chair, if it's okay with you, we'd like to turn the time over to Amy to begin a presentation that she has for the board and then we'll go from there.
I've been looking forward to this presentation, so let's get right with it, Amy. You have.
Good afternoon Chair and the Board. Thank you for your invitation to present today. My name is Amy Still Smith. I'm a prevention specialist at USBE. Bullying prevention is one of my primary focus areas. This presentation is meant to be a high level overview of Board Rule two seven seven six thirteen and briefly describe to the Board concerns that we have for your consideration. We have enabled the chat feature for this presentation. Please consider putting your questions that come up about the rule as we are going through the presentation in the chat. We're hoping to have time to go over questions and have discussion at the end. Board Rule two seven seven six thirteen has four main purposes. One, to require development and implementation of policy. Two, set parameters around training to employees and students. Three, enforcement of policies by the Board. Or requirement of LEAs to investigate allegations. I will be going into more depth about the purpose in the following slide presentation. Board Rule two seven seven six thirteen is governed by three main statutes. Fifty-three G Chapter nine addresses policy development and implementation along with standards for training. Fifty-three E Chapter three addresses school discipline. And fifty-three G Chapter eight addresses extracurricular activities and the prohibition of types of language and behavior. I will briefly overview the five main definitions in this rule. This is not all of the definitions in Board Rule two seven seven six thirteen. This overview is to provide you with an understanding of the main topics that we will be covering in this overview. I will be going through these slowly to give you an opportunity to read the slide and digest the information. A more in-depth definition of each of these can be found in the appendix at the end of the slide deck. Abusive conduct. This causes intimidation, humiliation, or distress occurs against a school employee by a student or a parent and is not constituted by a single act. Cyberbullying is the use of a device to cause harm. Retaliate is causing harm as retribution. Hazing, these are actions that endanger the physical or emotional health and or safety of another. Consent cannot be given. Bullying is intentional cause of physical or emotional harm or property damage or to cause one to fear they will be subjected to harm or property damage. According to the rule, the Board has three main responsibilities. Board responsibilities as set forth in the rule are, one, to create a model policy. Two, to provide model training. Three, to provide evidence-based practices. The last two, training and practices are subject to available funds. While USBE does currently provide a training to LEAs through safe and civil schools, at this time, there is no funding that has been set aside or designated by the Board to support the development of model training and or evidence-based practices and policies. At the end, I will put a link in the chat for anyone who would like to register for the upcoming functional behavioral assessment of bullying training being held in January. More information on the safe and civil schools can be located in the appendix at the end of the slide deck. In the next four slides, we will go over the Board rule requirements for LEAs. We will overview what LEAs bullying policy must cover, including training, parental notification, discipline plan, training for clubs and sports, and abusive conduct. First is the policy. LEAs must have an updated policy that addresses bullying, cyberbullying, hazing, retaliation, and making a false report. They must also address how to respond to a reported incident of bullying and ensure that students over eight, parents and employees sign that they have received the policy annually. With regards to training, from the slide you can see who and LEA must train. What must be covered in the training. Such as how bullying differs from discrimination and they can occur together or separately. And when the training shall take place. Included in their policy, LEAs must notify parents if their child has been involved in an incident of bullying, cyberbullying, hazing, or retaliation. LEAs must also identify the format of how a parent will be notified and designate an appropriate school employee to do the notification. LEAs in their discipline plan must identify how to deal with bullying types of behaviors. They determine procedures, designate individuals to issue notice, document disruptive student behavior, identify strategies for supervision, and ensure it is clear and enforceable. Please note that the LEA is required to engage a number of stakeholders in the development of this policy, such as administrators, instructional staff, support staff, students, parents, and community council. Separate from section four, LEAs must also include training specific to athletic programs and school clubs following the same format of who must be trained, what must be trained, and when training must take place. Abusive conduct. Abusive conduct must be identified as being prohibited in schools. And LEAs shall include in their policy a process for school employees to file grievance. LEAs are required to report on and investigate allegations of bullying, cyberbullying, hazing, and retaliation. Currently, the rule requires allegations to be investigated by a trained investigator. It is required that the victim and the alleged perpetrator of the bullying incident be interviewed as part of the investigation. It also allows for, but does not require parents, witnesses, and staff to be interviewed if deemed necessary. Interview details are confidential, but if there are additional incidences disclosed, they will become part of the review. Exceptions to investigators confidentiality of information related to incidences may be disclosed if the person conducting the investigation is required to speak with law enforcement. If a warrant or subpoena is served related to the incident when required for state and or federal reporting, such as civil civil rights information. When providing supports to students, LEAs have the option to work with students through trauma-informed practices and or utilize positive restorative practices. However, when determining what services to provide to students involved, LEAs cannot require a victim to engage in a practice with their alleged perpetrator. If an LEA would like an alleged victim to participate in a restorative practice, a parent must be notified and they must also give consent for them to participate. Fifty-three E Chapter three gives USBE the authority to interrupt dispersment of funds to LEAs for failure to comply with the rule. However, to our knowledge, this has not been done. We will now briefly go over LEAs requirements surrounding reporting and reporting. Included in their policy, an LEA must outline how and what circumstances they will report incidences of bullying to law enforcement and a civil rights violations. LEAs must keep records of when a parent is notified, training of employees, receipt of policy, number of incidences, and number of incidences based on the victim's actual or perceived characteristics. As governed by fifty-three G Chapter nine, LEAs must report or provide evidence annually by June thirtieth on their bullying policy. Implementation of the signed statement of policy receipt. For example, of a of one hundred parents, ninety or ninety percent signed a statement of receipt of the policy. They must provide verification of LEAs training to school employees, the number of incidences of bullying, cyberbullying, hazing, and retaliation, the number and type of incidences against a student based on the student's actual or perceived characteristics. Additional information on required reporting types under federal law can be found in the appendix at the end of the slide deck. Data can be reported for the student who are offenders and or the victim, though LEAs are not required to report incident records for victims and most LEAs do not report it. Data collection currently is primarily designed for collecting information on offenders. LEAs have the autonomy to choose their SIS system. However, they are required to develop the catalyst to ensure data from their system is sent or entered into the UTRAC system. Due to privacy concerns, LEA-level data is not made public. An example of why might be a small school that has only one or two reported incidences. Publicly reporting this data could reasonably allow someone to determine the specific individuals involved in the incident. In school year twenty twenty-one, of the one hundred and fifty-six LEAs, only ninety-one or fifty-six percent of LEAs had reported incidences of bullying. When we compare this data to the school climate data we will look at next, we believe this number to be an indication that not all incidences are being reported and or being reported accurately by LEAs to the UTRAC system. According to the CDC, Utah is below the national average of ninth through twelfth grade students reported being bullied on school property. The national average is nineteen point five percent and Utah sits at eighteen point four percent. The above graphic was pulled from the twenty twenty-one School Climate Survey. It delineates the percentage of each group that believe bullying is a problem and occurs often at their school. Please note that these percentages do not include retaliation, cyberbullying, or hazing, though they are collected in the report. In addition to the thirty-six percent of students, grades six through twelve, who believe bullying to be a problem that occurs often, twenty-four percent of sixth through twelfth grade students also believe cyberbullying to be a problem. Twenty-four percent believe retaliation to be a problem and seventeen percent believe hazing to be a problem. It is important to keep this in mind when looking at data in relation to the rule because R two seven seven six thirteen includes all of these types of incidences. There is often a misconception that reported bullying data encompasses these other subsets. However, in Utah, we report on them separately. You will find additional information related to the school year twenty twenty-one School Climate Survey in the appendix at the end of the slide deck. Bullying is reported on and included as part of the annual incident rate report published by USBE. Please note, data reported about victims of bullying is very limited and not currently reliable for the use in reporting or analysis. All of the incident data in the annual incident rate report is for offenders and victim data is excluded. If you look at the graphic in the slide, this is an example of one element of data that can be pulled. Of the total number of bullying incidences, five percent of those incidences were alleged to be discriminatory in nature based upon a protected class. That five percent is then broken down into the subsets of the protected classes. A link to the complete incident rate report can be found in the appendix at the end of the slide deck. I will now pass the presentation on to my coordinator, Tanya Alvernos.
Thank you, Amy. Good afternoon Chair and Board members. We want to thank you again for inviting us to come and speak on such an important topic today. And again, I'm Tanya Alvernos, the Coordinator for Prevention and Student Services. We just wanted to mention that due to various circumstances, the prevention team had already been considering issues surrounding the implementation of R two seven seven six one three as well as analyzing the language of the rule. We have identified some proposed updates and we would like to offer a few of those points to the Board for your consideration now. Next slide, Amy. The first and second considerations you can see on the slide, we would like to put forth to the Board today, go together and build on each other. The first one, build capacity for USBE to provide technical assistance to LEAs around their bullying policy. And the second is to create a process that supports USBE monitoring of LEAs bullying policies. There is no current mechanism identified to collect and evaluate LEAs bullying policies. And although there is a requirement in the rule for regular updates of those bullying policies, there is no timeframe designated for that review. In the past, the enhancement for at-risk or ears rule required LEAs to submit their school discipline plan, which included their bullying policy with their ears grant application. However, as you know, in the twenty twenty-one legislative session, the ears grant was ended to form the WPU at-risk add-on, which no longer requires an application from LEAs and therefore the school discipline plans are no longer collected via that process. Just to reiterate, there is not a process that currently allows for monitoring of school discipline plans and bullying policies. In addition, there is no ongoing funding designated to support that work. The next consideration, provide professional learning for LEAs around the requirements of statute and rule. We do not currently have professional learning that covers the specific requirements of the statute and rule. And we are learning that there is some confusion among LEAs about those requirements. In addition, a number of LEAs have requested this type of professional learning and we would like to make it available for all LEAs. Next slide, Amy. Next consideration is to analyze and improve current data elements being provided to USBE around bullying and how we can improve data collection. We have a few suggestions for this that you can see on the slide and they include addressing the data accuracy. As you heard in Amy's presentation, not all LEAs are reporting the data at this time, only ninety-one LEAs reported at least one incident of bullying, which is only about fifty-six percent, and that seems quite low to us. One of the reasons we hypothesize might be leading to these low numbers of reporting is that LEAs do not understand the types of incidents they need to report. So that leads to our second recommendation, which is to provide better guidance and definitions to LEAs about types and incidents that need to be reported with the goal of making this as consistent as possible statewide. The next consideration is to determine if there are further data elements that USBE needs to collect, such as not only the confirmed incidence of bullying, but how many alleged incidents of bullying there may have been within an LEA as this may help to identify patterns and areas of concern that need to be addressed. Lastly, we suggest that the Board determine if you would like to implement a process for analyzing and addressing the bullying data, such as if you would like staff to take any specific actions or make a regular report related to the data. Next slide. We have also identified some items to consider when thinking about the specific rule of language of the rule. The first one is to examine the requirements for parent notification and require a follow-up conversation with parents once a bullying investigation is completed. At this time, there is no requirement for follow-up with parents after an investigation. We have received several complaints from individuals who have contacted the Public Education Hotline that relate to this lack of follow-up and request to specifically consider adding this as a requirement. Next, we suggest clarifying the intent and method of training as well as who is required to participate. The language of the rule is not clear or consistent on who is required to be trained as well as who the LEA is required to provide training opportunities for. And the Board may want to consider clarifying the language to provide more detail on what they consider to be an effective means of training. The next consideration is to require LEAs to analyze and update their bullying policy at minimum every three years. As I stated previously, there is no time period currently in the rule or statute for when LEAs must update their policy and the Board may want to consider what an appropriate timeframe may be. We are open to whatever timeframe the Board may want to consider, but suggested three years because that seems a reasonable timeframe. And we thought that this could be done in conjunction with a three-year monitoring cycle where staff could collect policies and provide technical assistance to LEAs to update their policy with the latest best practices on the same cycle. We also recommend that the Board consider adding a statement that updates to an LEA's policy must include the input of relevant stakeholders, such as students, parents, and staff. Next slide. To continue, we also recommend that Board that the Board consider requiring districts to designate an individual at the district level to be trained as an expert on how to conduct investigations and how to follow up on bullying allegations as well as exploring how this could be done for charters. We recommend this for three reasons. First, the expert at a district level could train schools within the LEA how to do a thorough investigation and how to maintain compliance with the rule and the statute. Second, it may be necessary to have an individual who is not housed at the school conduct the investigation regarding the bullying incident if or when a parent feels that a school administrator cannot conduct the investigation in a fair unbiased way. And three, a district-level expert can identify hotspots within an LEA that may need to be addressed and provide the expertise to do that. The next consideration is to examine the language recording who regarding who is required to be interviewed regarding bullying incidents. The current language, as Amy told you, allows for others with information relevant to the bullying incident to be interviewed, such as teachers. However, it only requires collecting information from victim or the alleged perpetrator. This may lead to the investigator making conclusions based on one student's word over the other, which has been another type of complaint that we have received several times from members of the public. Lastly, we would like the Board to consider clarifying the language in the rule around abusive conduct. The section regarding abusive conduct is currently added to the end of the rule in its own section and may be better understood if integrated into the rest of the rule, so it is not seen as a standalone item separate from other bullying sections. Next slide. Here's our contact information in case any Board members would like to reach out about anything we covered today. This this concludes our presentation and we are available for questions.
Anya, can you quickly go through the three sections of the appendix so that for their review, just really quick, just the titles of them to show what's there?
Sure. Go back to that slide that has it. I wasn't.
Go ahead.
I wasn't tracking, I appreciate the presentation. This brief overview, very high level. The and I wasn't following the chat because I was intensely following the presentation, so I'm sure we can go to that, go to the.
Do you want me just to, I'm just gonna review really quickly what we've included in the append in the appendices. So append A is the key definition, so these are the expanded definitions from the rule. So we've given you the full definitions whereas before we gave you just a high-level overview. And we also gave you a few of the federals federal laws that relate to portions of the rule. In appendix B, we've given you some information about some of the technical assistance and training opportunities that the prevention staff currently offer to LEAs and and also some information about a current grant that we provide to the Utah Anti-Bullying Coalition. And then appendix C covers some of the information that's included in the in the School Climate Survey. And I think that's all and Amy, you can correct me. Oh, there's one more appendix. We just provided some references for the supporting information.
Okay, thank you. That covers. All right, so we're, that concludes your presentation, correct?
Correct. Thank you, Chair.
And a very high, high overview. I appreciate the work there. I'm also looking at our clock. I know we started a little bit, a few minutes late, but this this discussion is we're gonna get into the discussion and a few questions here. And so I'm I'm gonna try to keep track till we we can get in, get into these, we'll get started here. Member Earl.
Yeah. Yeah, I do have a question. Mine is in regards to. I I just wondered with maybe not a thorough reporting of items. I wonder if because of the current climate, it's districts are a little bit nervous that they're going to be thrown out on the front pages of somewhere. Do you know what I mean? And that they're going to be categorized as the district, the bullying district or something like that. Do you, how do we overcome kind of that perception or that idea in order to get accurate information?
I'm gonna answer.
Yes, please.
Um, as as we kind of said in our presentation, we don't publish LEA-level data, only state-level data, so that information is not made public. Meaning that they wouldn't be identified as the LEA that has the bullying problem because again, we only publish that aggregate data.
So that is your question, Board Member Earl?
Well. You don't think they have a perception that if, do you know what I mean? You you think, even if it's not published somewhere, I I understand that, but anyways, I I wonder if there's just a concern that, just a, you know, a general concern that they're gonna be perceived a certain way. I don't know. Maybe that's or maybe it's just time-consuming too, a little bit to have to go through all these, the reporting cycle.
Chair, may I respond?
Yes, please, Amy.
And Board Member Earl, I think that you bring up a very valid point. And I think probably one of the the items that we talked about is is bolstering up our training to LEAs and really helping them understand why we are collecting the data. As I mentioned in the beginning, I am a member of the prevention team and that's really our focus is trying to put put things in place to help with prevention efforts to to then reduce some of these risk factors. So I think I I think your point's very valid, but I think that we can probably maybe help with some of that if there is some appropriate training behind the purpose.
Thank you. I'm trying to track this out. I had member Norton on my list. Is your hand still raised?
And Chair Huntsman, there's also questions in the chat that have been in the chat. I don't know if you want to go to the chat first or to the hands.
Oh, we can go, go through the chats. How many is in there? I'm just trying to monitor. I just don't want, I want to make sure everyone gets a quick.
So we had a board member straight Norton and then Hart raised her hand after.
Straight. Norton Hart. Okay, straight first. Straight, member straight. Your question was in the chat. I'm not going to.
Sorry. Okay. So my question is, we have this rule and regarding bullying. And would compliance with this rule require an LE, LEA policy regarding gender identity?
And your question is?
May I, may I respond? I think I, I think I understand what Board Members.
Yeah. Amy.
So there, there is a portion of the rule that you may have heard where LEAs are responsible to report on incidences based on actual or perceived characteristics. And so that, that is encompassed, like I said, if you go to the appendices and look at the definitions from the federal guidelines, it, it could potentially be somebody who has a perceived characteristic of something that is within gender identity.
Do you have a follow-up, member straight?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Member Norton?
Yep. My question was about cyberbullying and where the line for schools is, if a child is sending this from home or from some other off-site location, how much is the school involved with that, if at all?
Amy or Tanya, how do you want to, who wants to take it? Just feel free to respond because I'm trying to see who wants to respond. I'm not seeing a hand.
Amy, go ahead.
Um, so it's, it's not clearly defined in the rule. And so that's, I don't have a very, very good answer for that because, because it is not clearly defined in the rule.
I would say that it's really up to the LEA's policy on that. They need to define that in their policy and also many of the allegations come in via the Safe UTE hotline. And so it really has to do with their, the LEA-specific policy about what they can and can't intervene in, if that makes sense.
Do you have a follow-up, member Norton?
I don't.
Okay, member Hart?
I'm, I'm wondering what, what leads us to believe that a lack of training is leading to the lack of reporting? Have we asked why they're, they're not reporting? The, have we asked the LEAs?
That, that is something that we haven't done to this point, but the reason that we said that a lack of training is it, we have had a few LEAs report to us that they, they weren't aware that they were supposed to report specific incidents. And so that is why we're hypothesizing that some of the under-reporting is because LEAs don't have a clear understanding of what needs to be reported and we just want to remedy that by providing some professional learning. If that's a webinar on our website, that would be easy enough to do.
So that would be directed towards, towards the LEA district, the LEA administration?
Correct. So how, how to, which incidents and types of incidences to report and when to do that?
Malia's got it.
We have Malia, yeah, McElvena.
Hi, yeah, Malia McElvan, Data and Statistics Team. So the issue of incident data being under-reported is something that our team, in collaboration with teams throughout the agency has been working on for a while now. And there was an effort prior to 2017, I don't recall the exact timeframe, when LEAs were contacted, brought together to discuss what are the barriers that they encounter in reporting incident data? And that definitely perceptions of something that's been mentioned already, perceptions of that if it's, if they report everything that, and we, we then go ahead and publish it, that they'll be perceived as an unsafe place and that stops things. There were technological issues and then a lot of it did come down to that we did, we didn't, and actually I would say we still don't have really good information and training on exactly what needs to be reported. Things like what Board Member Norton asked about with where do we draw the line? There, there's a lot of gray area. We can try to make everything as clear as possible on what should be reported, what, what doesn't need to be reported. But I think we're all always going to still have gray areas, but it's definitely a weakness that we have as a state, as an agency that we are working on. We've done a lot of efforts to improve that over the recent years and we've seen results from that in that we are getting better data. But we know that we have a lot more work to do.
Okay. Member Booth?
I have a question for Amy. In your presentation, I think I heard you say that you didn't have resources or there, there was nothing set aside to help in the training process. What, what kinds of resources would you need to be able to roll out the kind of training? And, and for whom? What would you need in order to get this program moving, clicking along the way you anticipate that it ought to be?
Amy?
And I think we addressed that a little bit when we talked about some of our considerations, but we really need to be able to first identify and get some information from LEAs specifically what they need with regards to training on implementation and understanding the rule and what they should be doing. And then we also need to be able to put together some specific trainings around those needs. I, I don't have a, a dollar figure on what that would be because I think it, it depends on what we are able to determine from the LEAs would be most beneficial for them at this time.
Just a brief follow-up, Chair?
Yes, please.
So, so it seems that that would be one of the critical issues for the board because to give them a responsibility as expansive and with as many gray areas as this has without resources to be able to gather in the information that they need and then fully implement the program and, and reap the good results that we're hoping for students on the other end or for staff. We've, we've got to make sure those resources are in place so that we, we can get the full benefit from the work that's being done by staff to address these issues and to assist local LEAs and charters to do the work they need to do to protect our students. That's all.
Just keeping track of everyone in the queue. So then we'll go back, make sure everyone has a chance to participate in here. I'm actually, I put myself in the queue too, and then we'll, we'll go back to others that didn't. So everyone at least has one opportunity in this conversation. My question is, a lot of this presentation is, is on the reporting side and managing that expectation and input coming in. And there's an, there's this other side of preventative and anti-bullying. But in this space of compliance from LEAs, if I, if I understand your presentation, Amy, we have LEAs that did not respond or, or said zero, or they didn't submit anything. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah. So if, if we, if we look at the information of LEAs who are reporting at least one incident or more, ninety-one out of the one hundred and fifty-three, LEAs, fifty-two, LEAs reported at least one incident. So there are, you know, forty, what are the, forty-four percent of LEAs that did not report any incidences?
So my question is, at USBE, what are we doing next steps? Do we communicate with those that did not respond, assuming that they had zero inputs? What, what is our next step? Because also in your presentation, you go to the failure to comply to board rule. And I think, I think in finance, we talked another one about how you communicate non-compliance and before you get to the withholding funds side of things. So are we active in that space of, of trying to get that input? Can, can you speak to that, Amy?
So presently, there is not a very good tool that USB is utilizing to make sure that that data is being reported. As Tanya said earlier, that data use or that information used to come in with regards to their policy when we had the year's funding. But that is, that's no longer there. And so bolster and coming up with a new format for that is going to be important.
So when that, when that changed, which wasn't just yesterday, but not too long ago, we don't, we don't get any data. Is that what I'm hearing?
So when I, when I get a, a report from the hotline of somebody, a parent or, or that situation, I do reach out to LEAs and I get a copy of their policy. I review their policy and I review their statement of facts of what occurred and ensure that those align with the policy and their policy aligns with the model policy. But aside from that, and there, there is not.
There isn't? Okay. Because I know that we spoke about it in finance today and I can't remember the, the rule. And, and who reminded me of that rule? There is a process. If you fail to do something, then we follow this process to, to get it, which could, I, I can't remember if it's one fourteen. I, I, I'm not recalling, but I know there's something in place there. Okay, we're going to go to, oh, Tanya, you have some input on my question?
Yes, I just wanted to, as far as the data goes and LEAs reporting the data, there, there has also, I just wanted to put out there, there has been some confusion among LEAs about how they should be reporting that data. There was a survey that was put together at one point and then that was discontinued. And then we re-implemented it recently. There was some turnover on the prevention team. And I think with that turnover, it just caused some confusion to LEAs about the actual reporting of the aggregate data. And so that's added a, a, a bit of complexity to this issue. So.
Okay, um, thank you. I'm going to go to Moss and then I'll go to some previous board members that already had an opportunity to ask at least one question. Member Moss?
I think I was up first.
Yeah, I think Scott might have been, maybe Jenny too. Thank you, Chair. But yeah, I think.
Jenny had a chance. Molly's had a chance, but I didn't see Scott.
Sorry.
So. But I, Molly, stick your hand up. I'm just, okay. So if you want to. Go ahead. So if you want to have, member Hanson go first and you'd be next.
Sure, I'll go, I'll go after Scott.
Okay, member Hanson.
Thanks, Jim. Sorry, I think we were queued up in the chat, maybe a little bit differently than the way you had it on your paper, but no problems. Two things. So one, on the reporting issue, I just, I don't think there's any incentive for LEAs to report accurately or take a chance on over-reporting. I mean, it just looks like a black eye on the LEAs to do that. Even if we have clear guidance, I think that's still going to be a struggle. One solution I think we could consider, which would be a big step, and I understand this would require some different resources maybe, is to have all of those reports funneled through USBE, like the hotline process. And then they would go back to the schools. That way we would be aware of everything that was happening. And then we would, you know, of course, turn it back over to the schools to handle it. But that would put us in the loop so that we could sort through and decide how to categorize those reports and whether they were constituted bullying or not. So again, big step, but if we really wanted to capture all of it, we could have the hotline be the reporting mechanism for this. The next one during the presentation, and I certainly want to hear comments from Tanya and Amy on both of these. But the next issue during the presentation, we talked about abusive conduct and the way that's kind of parked at the end of the rule. I believe that it's there because of the definition that's in statute, which says that abusive conduct is just a parent or student's conduct directed towards a school employee. That's the way it's defined. So I don't know that using that definition, we can spread it throughout the, the rest of the rule. Bullying, on the other hand, is an employee or a student directed towards an employee or a student. So parents are left out of that. On the other side, you know, only employees can have abusive conduct directed towards them. So, and I think Angie put this in the chat, if we, if we want to change that, it's more than just us. We've got to go back to the legislature and figure out what makes sense, you know, whether abusive conduct can be directed towards a parent, for example, or towards a student. If so, I think that should be one of our legislative asks is to get back into this and make some changes. So just those two, if I could hear your comments, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Chair, may I respond to that?
Yes. Tanya?
That is a, that is a great point. Board Member Hanson, and, and I think that the, the reason that we put that in there is because it's not clear the way the rule is written, that abusive conduct should be included in some of the other requirements of, of the, of the rule that have for the rest of the section. So bullying, cyberbullying, all of those things are included in all of these requirements for training, for notification, for assigned, for assigned statement from parents. And I think just having it at the end there has caused some confusion for LEAs that this is a separate issue that should be handled separately. And I think that's why we included it into our considerations for the board. And Amy, if you have anything to add, feel free.
Amy?
And yes, I, I agree with that, Tanya. I, I think that there needs to be some, some understanding around training because it does involve our students. They need to have training and, and understanding about abusive conduct.
Okay, thank you. And Angie.
Thanks. That helps to clarify that. It may be helpful in some of these. I know we just want to reference the code, but understanding what that definition is, you know, if we don't go out and hit the hot link, I think we might have the wrong idea in our heads about what abusive conduct is or what bullying really is. But thanks, that clarifies that part of it.
And did you have something to add?
I did. Thank you so much, Chair. Two things. One, I wanted to also bring to your attention that if an educator engages in inappropriate conduct or anything that's even probably a lesser standard than what I would say bullying and hazing is or abusive conduct. If, if an educator engages in inappropriate conduct, they can have licensing action taken against them, as well as HR action at the local level. So I, I put in the chat a reference to R277, 217, and it's in section two of that rule where an educator may not engage in a single egregious instance or pattern of inappropriate contact in any communication, including written, verbal, or electronic with a minor student, colleague, or member of the community. And there may be another one about bullying, and I, I was trying to go through really quickly. But I wanted to bring that to your attention. And then second, I think the reason why abusive conduct has been somewhat narrow. Abusive conduct is actually a term that's used not just in education, but if you look at like DHRM or universities, it's really meant to be about generally members of the public and how they interact with employees. And then it's meant to talk about a safe workplace. And I am not saying that you shouldn't or wouldn't want to expand that definition of abusive conduct to, to discuss how educators are interacting with members of the public or parents. But I, I think that right now it's a term of art that generally has been, not just in public education, but in human resources arena. It's about people on the outside or, or people impacting people in their workplace. And educators, they are in their workplace versus a parent. It's not a workplace situation. So I give you that context only to raise the issue of if a parent is being treated inappropriately by, say, the, the teacher or a principal at their student's school. inappropriately by, um, say the, the teacher or a principal at their student's school. There are avenues whereby they can make complaints either to the district or the charter school's HR department. But they also can make complaints to our office as far as a UPAK, um, incident and investigation. So there are other avenues for parents when they are on, on the receiving end of inappropriate conduct from an educator.
And that, if I can just follow up, that might be a good, um, thing to, is to note if we're gonna open this rule up again, just to somehow reference that, you know, educator discipline is covered under this rule. Um, and, uh, just to make it clear about how that is different and separate. And I'm not advocating for any change to those definitions. I just, um, after hearing the presentation, wondered if that was the intent that we wanted to do that. Sounds like that's not. We just want to make sure there's training on those definitions.
All right. Well, well, thank you. And Patty Norman, if you'll keep me straight on the chat. Not everybody's participating in the chat and I'm like the worst to follow it. For me, it's like somebody's whispering over on the side and I, and I, I wanna see the body language and listen to everywhere. So kinda keep, keep me straight here as I don't leave people out. And, but, but thank you. Um, we'll go to member Moss and being next.
Um, thank you Chair. Really quick, kind of 30,000 foot question on training and guidance. There are a lot of interlocking concepts here that play out and apply to different people. So without going into the weeds, um, you know, this references Title VI and Title IX. There's different application to teachers and students. We've had DEI training that also touches on issues addressed by Title VI, Title IX. Do we have training that goes into compliance on Title VI and Title IX for teachers?
Do, when you say we, you're talking USBE have.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, you, USBE, right. And I raised this briefly, uh, with, with, um, our AAG, but I'm not sure the full scope of whether that is a separate training or guidance service that we provide.
So, and this is on our side. Do we, Tanya?
I, um, I, I do not know the answer to that, but we can certainly ask, we can certainly get the answer for that and bring that back to the board.
So.
Great, thank you.
But in that training space, um, can, I, I'm trying to remember if it's Tanya or Amy who brought it up is the LEA requirement is very specific of who and how often is volunteers. It's just about anyone I know from my years on a local board and some of you guys come from, from local boards recognize and have been a part of that extensive training from coaches and and then there's that three year after you're, you're trained that, that happens in there, like but I don't know of any from USBE also, so.
Yeah. And, and that's my question, whether there's guidance to LEAs in the way that we're discussing here about guidance for applying the bullying and hazing policy, whether we do similar things in that, in that space. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, um, member Earl?
I'll be quick. I know we're getting overtime here. Um, I was just gonna say, when we talk about gray areas, I think we have to remember we're working with children. Um, children have lots of gray areas, right? And I think that may be, um, you know, maybe some kind of a reason why everybody's not so eager to just report everything that happens. The other thing is, is, um, um, just, I spent just a little bit of time in, in junior highs and over the last little bit. And it does seem like bullying is the joke. And I'm not saying, you know, you could be walking through the hall and you can hear the kids saying, quit bullying me. But it's more of a, and I'm not trying to belittle that, but it's, it's so, I'm always trying to wonder, I'm like, okay, do the kids? And we know when it's bullying, right? Because of the, the impact it has on kids, but at the same time, because we discuss it so often, it almost becomes like, um, the inside joke, right? Inside the classroom or in the hallway or whatever. You know, you do anything and it's bullying, um, which isn't the case. So I, anyways, I'm just saying the perception sometimes with kids is, is not um, the reality of what we're looking at here. So, and then one last thing, um, I don't wanna be in the middle. I want local, I want local districts to take care of this. This isn't, unless it's an egregious thing and districts didn't take care of it, I don't wanna be the middle man. Um, I would rather they took care of it. So that, you know, we're not making decisions for them. I think they're competent and capable. Um, I just worry about us getting into the middleman business.
Um, member straight?
Thank you. I, I think this follows off what board member Earl's talking about. I wanna take it just a little step, uh, further. First of all, reporting, we're constantly talking how we can reduce, uh, reporting requirements. And, uh, you know, oftentimes when there was an incident of bullying, there's different levels of bullying. And, uh, if I ever saw it, I nipped it in the butt, but I didn't go tell anybody to put it on a report somewhere. Uh, now that I have seen serious bullying and I'm, and that was obviously reported up the line to administration, but I don't know, they took the time to go to make a mark and, and say, let's report that. And lastly, this is like the second or third time today, I, I, we've talked about more training, more trained for educators. You know, we're not even, when are we gonna get to all the other things? And, uh, you know, these trainings are important and I don't wanna diminish that at all, because they are, uh, these are important topics for educators. They need to be able to deal with these effectively and, and they need to be trained on how to do this. But, uh, we're gonna be coming to legislative session and they're gonna talk about how can we make teachers more accountable and educators and administrators and everyone. And the pile just keeps growing bigger and wider. And so, uh, you know, I, I, gosh, I know I'm just kinda ranting here, but that's a real concern for, for me is the demands we're placing on education at all levels.
So. Okay, thank you. I just, I'm the one to put this on the agenda as your chair. And I think it's really good for us to bring in a, in an open meeting like this, a little bit of discussion on our rule. And I appreciate the feedback, the, or the presentations that tell us what's in statute. And our job is to make sure there's compliance to statute. And I, and I'm, I'm with you, some of the other board members. It's not about creating more burden, but there is this accountability that at the LEA level, that all of our students, all of our children are safe and safe from bullying. And it's not the bullying, it's laughter and everything else. It's the other bullying where there's tears and fear and everything else is associated with it. And I keep asking myself, what more can we do or should we do? And, and I appreciate this presentation because I see some weak links in our armor. I'm not gonna call them out right now because I believe we come back as, as this rule moves forward, it's, we, we need to respond, um, a little bit here, especially after discovering on the reporting process, how, you know, now, now and again, we, we, well, we've missed this opportunity on the reporting because of some changes that we've that, that we have had. And so we, this board in the past, and I believe moving forward, we don't kick the can down the road, but at the same time, we, we try to weigh that out, those burdens and every, everything else that's required on, on LEAs, but safe. Safety is pretty important. Um, and as always has been to everyone that's on this board. And I believe we can get to that, to that, that space. Um, moving forward as, as this rolls out and there will, we're always constantly trying to make something better. And so we'll follow processes as it, as it happens, but I, I'm not seeing unless Patty, you tell me, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. I know our time is up and I'm not wanting to grandstand or anything, but I appreciate, um, the presentations that are, that have been given. I'm sure there's a lot of other questions after these presentations and I have confidence in this board that, that we're in, we're in the education business, a safe education business. So I, I appreciate your participation in this study, um, session. Angie, are we leaving anything undone on this subject right here? We've covered the presentation.
Uh, you are not leaving anything undone and we, uh, believe we've covered the presentation. I think as, um, a deputy superintendent Norman put in the chat, if you do have questions afterwards, I'm sure that Tanya and Amy could provide answers. There, they, as you could see, they have wonderful expertise in this area. And, um, they provided some recommendations that the board consent, could consider for a future rule, um, rewrites. And so we, we'll be happy to take a direction from board leadership and others, uh, about bringing a rule back to committee and the board in a future date. But I, that's it from staff's perspective. I believe unless any, uh, Pat, Deputy Norman or anybody else has, if we missed anything.
Okay, we are a little bit over time, but I appreciate everybody hanging in here with us. Um, this concludes our, our agenda for this afternoon. Um, wanna wish everyone a safe and happy Christmas, December, everything that's happening in that space. I appreciate, um, board members, all your work that has been done here the last couple of days and all the preparation against staff. Um, and, and other inputs that are, that's making our meetings happen. And again, thank you and take care and be safe. And this meeting is adjourned.